I'm ready to go.
You're ready? All right. We welcome everyone to our Cache County meeting. Today's Tuesday, September 17th, 5:00 PM. Appreciate everyone being here. Thank you for your attendance. We will have an opening by Councilmember Mark Hurd.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to briefly give comment in recognition of Constitution Day, as well as Patriot Day, which took place last week, being September 11th. I found a quote by going through the Cache Valley Remembers display that I thought was relevant to both holidays that we're celebrating, one today and one last week. I wanted to share that with the group. This is from the 9/11 memorial in New York. The closing line of their mission statement, if you will, is, "May the lives remembered, the deeds recognized, and the spirit awakened by eternal beacons, which affirm respect for life, strengthen our resolve to preserve freedom, and inspire an end to hatred, ignorance, and tolerance." And I thought that being a fitting statement about Patriot Day, as well as tying in Constitution Day that firmly believe the purpose of the US Constitution and in its inspiration is to do the very things stated there. I thought those two quotes tied well together. But thank you for allowing me to share that. And then I'd also like to include a prayer.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful to be gathered here today for the Cache County participate in the governing process for our local area. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy here and for the, in this land, and especially for the gifts and blessings that we enjoy in this community. We pray for thy watchful hand to abide with us in the decisions that we make and in the actions that we take involving our actions here as a council, as well as citizens and friends in our community. We pray that thou be mindful of those who are injured and afflicted and in need of special care and comfort for the things that they are facing in their lives. And we pray that we may be mindful, as well as the things that we can be about in government, and to keep the proper role and respect for the actions and agency of all involved and individuals as individuals in this county. We're grateful for all we have when we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Council, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark. We appreciate those comments. All right. Has everyone had a chance to review the amended agenda? And I'll accept a motion for approval of that.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes from August 27th and September 9th? So there's two dates there.
On the August 27th minutes, there's a correction.
Okay.
It's on 11D, Marshall P. Mon, Family Trust Rezone. It lists as the motion passes, aye, David Erickson, Catherine Bousset, and Goodlander Carl Ward, and then nay, Nolan Gunno, Mark Hurd, and then David Erickson again.
Hmm.
Voting, aye and nay.
It was 3-3.
3-3. And I was gone.
Failed. It failed.
For lack of, for lack of a...
Dave Erickson listed as an aye and a nay.
Yeah, Dave is listed as an aye and a nay.
Yep, and they got Barbara as an aye, right?
No, Barbara's...
I was absent.
Yeah.
Which proper, which is the vote?
The Marshall one.
Was that the one that...
Marshall Mon.
The Mon.
Pulling up the...
The one on the highway?
Yeah.
Was on, was on... The motion passed.
Huh?
The minutes say the motion passed.
And it shouldn't be...
And lists Dave Erickson twice.
It was 3-3.
It was 3-3, and so it failed.
Failed for not having prevailing.
Yes.
So we need to change that, Carl.
Good catch, Carl.
Okay, thank you.
With that change in the minutes, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of August 27th, 2024.
Okay. With that amended change, we will, all in favor of approving the minutes of August 27th, 2024. Please vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, how about the minutes for September 9th?
That's just workshop minutes, right?
Yeah, it was workshop minutes.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the workshop minutes from September 9th, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Carl, for looking at that. All right, we will, I will have a report from the county executive, and we'll hand that over to Executive Zuck. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Barbara. I just wanted to ask you, Mark, I'd like to thank everyone who supported that event. I don't know if any of you had a chance to go, but it was an incredible presentation. If you didn't have a chance to go, I would recommend that you attend next year, wherever it might be. I've heard there potentially will be a public city next year. I would like to thank everybody who helped to make that event happen, to remind our youth primarily. That was the number one cause, was to remind our youth about what happened on 9/11, and more importantly, what happened after 9/11, and how our country united. And I want to thank Councilmember Hurd for all of your support. Thank you for being part of the organizing committee and bringing your family, your wife, everyone who you brought. I think there were a whole bunch of your friends and neighbors there, too, that you've brought. Thank you for helping to recruit. There were, I believe, about 500 volunteers who helped throughout the week with everything from setup to takedown and everything in between. And I haven't heard a final, final number, but I've heard estimates between 15,000 and 20,000 people who went through it, and about half of those were students. So thank you again to everybody who helped with that. Utah State University, all of our local media helped to promote it. And I think it was a great opportunity for our youth to learn something important about our American history. With that being said, I'll move on to the most important thing that we're here for today, and that's our budget. I wanted to start off again with some expressions of gratitude for the preparation of this budget. It's been, I would say this has been the most difficult year as far as putting this together, because we've had a lot of new people, a lot of new faces. And if you look at our finance department, we've got one of our finance people who was here before when we've done the budget, and everybody else is new. We've got a new Finance Director, Wes. He's new, but I especially want to thank him for his hard work and diligence. We have met so many times and had so many discussions and worked so many hours, day after day, on the budget, and I appreciate how much he has just jumped right in and been working on it. I, as I think about the complexity of the budget, I think about, in my previous role, I was at Nabley City. Nabley had a budget that was much, much smaller. And I felt like it took me a few years of going through that budget process until I felt really comfortable with it and all the various aspects of it. And this budget's more than 10 times that size, much more complicated, a lot of different funding sources. And so I recognize that what Wes and all of his staff have to do in figuring out all the bits and pieces and moving parts in our budget is a very, very complex task. And I appreciate all of the hard work they've put into getting together what we have today. I know we've also put another difficult task on them in asking them to move a little more quickly, maybe, than we normally would with the budget. And that's added an extra level of stress and pressure and urgency, and I appreciate how they've handled that. I also just would like to thank all of our department heads and the rest of the finance staff that works for Wes there, and Bryson, our auditor, and Micah and Dirk helped a ton with it as well. And then I know council members have been involved with a lot of parts of the process, too. So just, I just want to say thank you. And with all that being said, we're not done yet. This is just one step that we're at right now, where we're presenting a tentative budget. And there's a reason why it's called a tentative budget in the state law and in our processes, because it's not done yet. We have till the end of the year to do that, but there are certain steps that need to happen. And so we need to get moving on that. With that being said, I'm going to introduce Wes now. He's going to present what we have so far in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Executives. It's had a lot of people involved, and I've got to give a lot of credit to Dirk and Micah and my staff. It is a complex budget and has a lot of moving parts, so. Let's see. Give me just one sec. I had it pulled up, and I Xed it out, so. So we are adding parts to this PowerPoint presentation. I intend to have this be included with the budget document so that the public can see how we came to, you know, the conclusion of building the budget. You know, just setting the stage for the budget. We've had quite a bit of population growth. We are a very fast-growing community. When you look at, you know, we are the fastest-growing state, right? And we are one of the fastest-growing counties. And so we do have, you know, burdens that are placed on us as a government. Some of the things that I had met with and talked with you last week about where we were at at that point in the budget. Since then, we've had the opportunity to meet with, you know, Bear River Mental Health, get some information from them, and the Health Department. Some of that's related to the opioid settlement. And so we will have additional monies that we are going to potentially budget towards that as long as the council approves. Previously, you had approved up to 85% of the opioid money be donated over the Health Department. And so we're just trying to capture that increased amount. We received quite a few more settlements this year. And so again, our intent is to remit 85% to them. Some of the other things that are included in the budget that you have to consider is unfunded legislative mandates, you know, your school safety, your SROs that we're now putting in the schools. Another thing that we have to consider is first responder mental health. In the previous years, that was funded by ARPA. Moving forward in '25 and beyond, you know, it's going to fall back to the basic, you know, Employee Assistance Program or EAP that we have for all employees. You know, do you want to consider having some additional costs there? We've also seen a lot of unprecedented inflation over the last several years. You know, that results in increased personnel costs, increased health costs, cost for equipment, supplies, everything that a government needs to operate. We've seen it impacted. Cache County's tax rate has dropped every year since 2012. So in 2012, the rate for general operations and health was at .002345. If we don't do any change there, the combined between, again, general operations and health will be at .001352, which is half of what it was in 2012. Property tax as a percentage of revenue has dropped considerably. In 2012, half of the revenue came from property tax. Now it's a quarter. Cache County ranked second lowest in state on per capita costs of government. So it's good to be conservative. Are we able to fund and maintain, you know, the appropriate level of service in a government that functions? I had last week talked briefly about Taxpayer Association, the study they had put out, and we were basically $48 per capita less in fees and taxes that we take in compared to our neighboring Boxhelder County. So if you start to consider what services are they providing, is it similar to what we do as a community? There you can see kind of the, again, the population growth that's going on and kind of where we're projected to be. And that's put out by the Kim Gardner Institute. And again, I kind of talked about those specific percentages, but where we have such a large population, sometimes it's good to also just look at the actual dollar amount of the numbers and how much those have changed. You know, our overall budget is basically at $52 million now. And so you can see the general and the health levy. Health levy does post to another fund, but you can kind of see where we were in 2012. I had mentioned that, kind of that $48 difference, you know, and you take 48, 16, times, again, the amount of our population, 145,000 roughly, and you have about $7 million additional dollars in revenue that, based on our size, what Boxhelder would be charging for the same services, and they were the third lowest. So they were, you know, low on the lower end as far as costs to provide those different government services. And again, moving forward, we want to make sure this is a combined vision and mission. We know that you're probably used to maybe a budget that's a little further along in the process. We've tried to get it to you in an organized way in which you can kind of start to make some decisions on manpower and capital, you know, market merit, other considerations that we're seeing, and kind of quantify those amounts and be able to help you, you know, decide what's appropriate to spend in the budget. And again, we're just walking, you know, developing a balanced approach to building blocks. You know, our expenditures must equal revenues. You had, we had talked about that last week, and again, what's appropriate for Cache County moving forward? You know, we're looking at all that information to help make a decision. You know, what level of service do we want to provide to our citizens? And it could be different. Again, we've got to consider ongoing costs, personal and other operations, along with capital costs or one-time monies that we expend. And then when it comes to the revenues, we really have to have those equal to expenditures. So, you know, we look at our current general fund revenues to fill a portion of that, potentially use of fund balance, potentially new property tax or an option tax or increase, option tax increases or fee increases. And so that's giving you kind of a piece. You know, there's a few different options you have to consider, and you can consider a mix of those. For each new percentage increase, 1% increase in new property tax results in about $180,000 of new revenue. So again, just walking through the overall general fund balances end of 2023 to beginning of 2026. So with the 2023 audit, we were at just about $31 million, shy of $31 million, based on the most recent projection that we've been able to put together. And considering that, you know, a lot of these do manpower and additional compensation that's been adopted, we're now at $7,223 in fund balance that we're projecting we will burn through, through 2024. That'll begin our 2025 balance with $23,658,375. So with our 2025 budget, the one that we've handed to you, we're basically going through $6.8 million. So that puts us at our beginning 2026 balance estimate at about $16.8 million. You know, if we want to keep 35%, we want to keep on that higher end and have 35% in our fund, it's right around that $18 million. And so if we say, yes, let's do the baseline budget, and let's not do anything with fees or taxes, we'll be right down to about that, you know, 33%, somewhere in there.
Can I ask a question, Wes?
Yeah.
That when you say that we would use, if this, what you gave us, we would use $6,813,000, does that include any of the capital expenditures or any of the manpower increases that we've kind of pulled out? Are those included in that number, or would those be in addition?
So when it comes to manpower, it includes stuff that's been approved prior to June. So if it was approved in a meeting here, it's included.
Okay.
Not any new requests?
Not any new requests.
Okay.
So, you know, next week, you'll have a budget amendment that comes to you, potentially for like a county surveyor and one other position. That's not factored in here. And it's not, I haven't listed as a manpower request yet either. So when you consider that, if that's approved, it also will need to be added here.
It does not include capital?
It does not include capital. It does include basically the funding gap in fire, an ambulance, of like $2.5 million. And you can see the transfer out of the general fund to cover that. It basically includes existing levels of manpower. It's factored in a 14% increase in health insurance.
But not the market and merit increases we talked about?
Not the market or merit. Nope.
Okay.
So I'm talking specifically when it comes to general fund. There are some other funds in which we have costs that, you know, our municipal services fund would pay for part of the healthcare or, you know, certain personnel costs that are going to come to you. But really focusing on the general fund, because that's where the funding gap is. You know, money for positions approved mid-year 2024 and other various open positions. We've got basically $2.4 million in costs associated with those positions. So that's included. Again, we've included everything that's previously approved. It includes the Fire District, you know, $2.5 million. It also addresses, you know, annual costs of mid-year adjustments, remaining general fund expenditures to consider. You know, these are not in the budget. Merit and market increases with FICA and retirement. Department-requested positions for Public Works Attorney and others. There's a number of different positions, some of which we will be able to eliminate. We know some of them we'll be able to eliminate for sure. But there are some positions that, you know, we're asking you to consider whether to move forward with those positions. And we're also in the general fund. We want you to consider capital and countywide one-time costs. So there are some capital that we've provided you in a printout, broken out by the different funds. We're going to want you to consider specifically in the general fund, how do we fund those things and what should be funded?
So that $8 million is on top of the $6 million?
Correct. $484,000 of the costs are those opioid monies that will come out of restricted fund balance. We've already received those. So we are going to ask to add that into the budget. But it'll also be its previous monies we received this year that will be reserved and restricted for opioid-specific purposes. Any questions up to this point? Some additional considerations to consider in the 2025 budget. Again, I got a handout specific to mental health for our first responders. It has a few different options on there. The bottom option is the EAP option, which is already included in the budget. Any increase in service comes at a cost, and it's addressed in that handout. So we do have, Jordan Mathis will come on the 24th to basically present to you as a council what they've done with those opioid funds, what they've been able to accomplish, and to formally request them from you. We can use some of those funds. We need to touch bases with our sheriff and fire and see if they can't use a certain amount of those funds as well. But you will have them come and present to you. Bear River Mental Health will come and present to you here on the 24th. And that's it as far as the presentation goes.
Right, Council, any questions? Or Wes?
We have a lot of reading and studying to do.
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Thank you, Wes. I just wanted to do, on Constitution Day, a reading of code. It's very simple. It is from the Fiscal Services Act for our state, and it reads, "The governing body shall review, consider, and adopt a tentative budget in a regular or special meeting called for that..." in a regular or special meeting called for that purpose. And then, subject to subdivision eight BII, the governing body may thereafter amend or revise the tentative budget prior to public hearings on the tentative budget." So, really, this is a passing off. We've all discussed in staff meetings, adopt seems like an interesting word because you're not really adopting it as the final adoption. It's more of an adoption of now it's yours. So, we are so dedicated to working right along with you to answer any questions and actually work side by side to further develop the different proposals and how we're going to come up with a balanced way to fix or to meet the needs of the county. And it is an interesting time. So, we're here to help you and we're excited for this opportunity over the next however long you'd like to spend. Obviously, we, you, we, you get to pass it by the end of the year, and that's really the deadline. So, I just wanted to offer our help and read that code because that's, we're just passing it off now. So, congratulations. You may adopt it at your will. I believe that's an official act at some point.
I was going to read that.
Oh, you should read it again. So, thank you, yes.
So, Michael, what do we do from here?
So, one of you needs to make a motion to adopt the 2025 tentative budget.
I'll accept a motion.
Question first?
Yes, thank you.
On the capital improvements, you've got four million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, but then we've got this handed that comes down to ten. Could, by next week, you highlight what is the four million of this? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I'll answer that for you real quick. There are two items, two projects in the general fund that are funded with COGS money and that, in the capital handout.
Oh, yes, Richmond and Mon Corner?
So, the two that are going to be funded, Estancia Lane and Thirty-four Hundred South, I believe.
Those are not COG.
Or no, 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 it's further, it's further down. COG eleven hundred North Richmond is one million one forty-eight five hundred. And Mon Corners, COG, is seven hundred and eight thousand one hundred. Those two are COG projects that are listed. The monies will be transferred into the general fund to basically fund those. And then, we have six-point-six million then being transferred out to the Capital Projects Fund to be completed. So, the other amounts, the seven hundred and ten thousand are capital requests in the Municipal Services Fund. The Fire District Capital and Ambulance Fund total, we've got eight hundred and sixty-five thousand. So, we're transferring two and a half million roughly into the fire. And that eight sixty-five will basically be addressed there. And then, the airport fund, we've got two-point-four million in capital projects that are requested, many of which will be funded with grant monies. I know we can't fund all these, so we'll start to develop, we'll start to push out, you know, those to future years. But I wanted you to start to see, even if it can't necessarily be funded in the immediate, we need to look at what impact it will have on future years. So, we'll start to develop a kind of a five-year capital plan. So, we're looking forward at those costs instead of once a year being surprised. You know, good example of that is with Bart. He has some significant IT costs that are in a future year. So, we want to, again, start to develop that five-year plan so you can see it. Does that answer all the questions you have? Feel comfortable with that, Nolan?
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Yes.
Wes, could you address the, this manpower request sheet you gave us? Are these ones that have already been approved in and have been in the budget but have not been hired yet?
So, these are positions that we do not have in the tentative budget.
These are new requests.
You've excluded from the, new requests.
So, they've not been approved, but they're new requests for the budget?
For the budget. So, they're not in the budget at this point.
Okay.
We want you to consider these positions and...
They'd have to be added in.
They'd have to be added in.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Wes, if you'll go back to slide forty.
I'm a, I can't see the slide number on there, I'm sorry.
It's down from there. Keep going. Keep going down. I think you're going up. Keep going, right there. So, this is the one Nolan was asking about, the four-point-seven there. And then, Catherine, the one you're asking about is that one-point-one. So, these are all things that are not in the budget right now but are requests. So, all of these positions are positions being requested by departments, but they're not currently in the budget.
And the one-point-one million, some of that, that also includes some for these related funds, like the senior center specifically. We have to, where they don't have the ability to fund that, the general fund would bear it. And so, there's a couple of positions that actually end up getting, impacting the general fund if we were to approve them.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Catherine? Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, that said... I'll accept that motion.
I will make a motion for the council to adopt the tentative budget as presented to us, and then we can move on from there.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the tentative budget as it has been presented to us. And we will look at things for the final budget, right? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Wes. Thank you, executive.
Thank you.
All right, it is a little bit past five-thirty, so we do need to set a public hearing for September twenty-fourth, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen on the Honeybee Zone. I would accept a motion to set that public hearing.
I will move that we set a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, Honeybee Zone, for September twenty-fourth.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set a public hearing for September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, on the Honeybee Zone. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we have no pending action, no initial proposals for consideration of action at this time. Moving right along, we're down to other business. We have a One Utah Summit coming up at SUU down in Cedar City. Are there any others planning on attending that? Someone through the ninth?
Just a heads up, there's a council meeting during that.
Okay.
Dave's going to make it work, but...
All right.
I'm going to be there. I have to go down for that graduation.
Okay.
For the URA.
Okay, we have to, we need to have a majority here on that two, four. So, let's keep that in mind. All right, USU Homecoming Parade, October twelfth at ten a.m. You can add my name to that, please. It's a Saturday.
It'll rain.
Yeah, it will. It will rain and the wind will blow, and bring your umbrella.
And then it'll get hot.
Yeah. Okay, any other names added to that? Okay, then we have the USAC Fall Conference, November fourteenth through the fifteenth at Ruby's Inn. Any other names we need to add to that?
Hard maybe.
That's the same way with me.
I'm a maybe.
I'm maybe.
What's the temperature like in Bryce Canyon in mid-November?
It was pretty nice last year.
We were there in September.
Were we in September? Oh, sorry, yeah.
It won't be, it won't be as cold as here, but it's not going to be like St. George.
Because it's like five thousand feet in elevation, isn't it?
It'll be a little warmer.
It'll be chilly.
It's, it's going to be...
You can wear a coat.
Yeah. It'll be...
You have to try for it. I know, we can still do our hike.
All right, what's this, oh, this is the treasurer's reconciliation that we had on there. Okay, very good. Any questions, concerns on that? No? Okay, council member reports, we'll start with Mark.
I have no, I mean, just, we all went to the UAC Conference last week, so that's all I was involved with since our last meeting.
Very good. Nolan?
Ditto what Mark said, so...
Okay, Catherine?
What they said, but also Barbara and I participated in the compensation committee this week, and we are happy to report that our insurance didn't come back as high as we thought it would. It's now, it's a seven percent increase versus what we thought would be maybe fourteen percent. And it's a better insurance that we'll be presenting to the council here in the future. So, that's really exciting. Excited for both the employees and the cost savings for the county.
From what I understand, Catherine's had experience with P E H P. The sheriff really loves them, so I think it's going to be a really good insurance and provider. So, Carl?
Well, as noted, I thought that the UAC Conference had some very, very good information provided to us. I was interested in the attempts being made to make housing in Utah more affordable. But there are no, there are no easy answers to that. But people are thinking about it and trying. So, other than that, nothing else.
Thank you, Sandy?
I went yesterday to the disaster kickoff at the sheriff's office. They're putting together a plan and they want, like, they're trying to get feedback from all of the communities in the valley. We had, they've got a timeline of about a year to put this plan together. But we'll all need to be involved in that at some point so that we know what our role is when the disasters happen. So, I think the next meeting is in November. I met with Stephen Nelson today and some of the, sorry, can't even talk, some of the rec center people from the valley, and they've gotten back the bids on the RFP for the rec center study. There were a couple that were just totally not, they didn't even fulfill the needs that we needed. The one that is the most, probably has the most experience and looks like the very best proposal is going to come in at about a hundred and forty-five thousand, which is seventy thousand more than the seventy-five we put towards that. They were going to start working with some of the local cities and see if they would, how much they would be willing to contribute towards that rec center study. So, at some point, they'll come back to us and ask for additional RAPS money, which is what we talked about when we gave them the seventy-five. So, that's kind of where that is. They still, and they didn't choose, they haven't chosen yet. There's just, that's the high end of the one, and then there was some that were lower than that that they'll be discussing.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thanks for your reports. Okay, I have nothing to report at this time. That said, I'd accept a motion to go into executive session. So, moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we...
We have to say what it's for.
Okay.
We have to go into executive session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Thank you.
Sir, second?
I'll second what Catherine said.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right.